We'll get going. I have 5:30. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. It is May 10th, and the time is 5:30. Would like to mention that during the meeting, we will have a couple of call to the public sessions that is the chance for citizens to chime in for three minutes. Alls that we do ask is that you provide us your name and address before starting. And I just remind the citizens that this is your opportunity to present information to the board. It's not intended to be a two-way conversation. So I would like to start with a moment of silent reflection. Thanks. Thank you. Now if you would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman. Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Zajak.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Plank.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is correspondence. This evening, we have correspondence from Alger County, Bay County, Grand Travers County, and Wexford County. I am looking for a motion to receive and place on file.
So moved, Lawrence.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Lawrence, support by Commissioner Gross. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're at our first call to the public. Anybody wishing to address the board? Please, if you're on Zoom, use the raise your hand function or wave at us if you can't find the raise your hand function. I'll start initially with anybody here in the meeting room. I don't see anybody with their hand up in the meeting room. So we will go to the virtual portion. And I see Jessica has her hand raised.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Jessica Bearfield. I am in Putnam Township. In response to a FOIA issued to the CDC on February 23rd of 2021, requesting the scientific studies that have proven or suggesting that masks work, the CDC replied as follows. "The CDC is not aware of any randomized controlled trials that show masks or double masks or cloth face coverings are effective against COVID-19. There is experimental data showing that masks block particles." I don't think anyone is arguing the fact that masks can block particles. Obviously, that is true. A mask being able to block particles does not mean that they can block particles as tiny as coronavirus. And the fact that the CDC is acknowledging there are no actual clinical studies or trials to test the effectiveness of masks, and specifically COVID-19, speaks volumes. Texas, Mississippi, Iowa, Montana, North Dakota, Alabama, Alaska, Arizona, Florida, Georgia, Idaho, Missouri, Nebraska, Oklahoma, South Carolina, South Dakota, and Tennessee have either never required masks or have lifted the mask mandates in the last several months. Each of these states have significant lower COVID rates than our state of Michigan, and the ones that have been recently lifting mandates are showing their numbers dropping to all-time lows within three weeks of lifting the mask requirements. Why do you think that is? Could this possibly be because masks do more harm than good? For over a year, the governor has destroyed lives and businesses based on the best science and data. Science and data she has never shown to anyone. I personally feel she has irrefutable proof. I personally feel if she has irrefutable proof that science and data that fully supports what she is doing, she would be, well, without being super nice about it, she'd probably be shoving it down our throats, telling us to take and not taking her word for it. With the information in facts we do have at hand, it is time to be loosening the strings and not doubling down and using myosia to permanently mandate masks and other restrictions that have no business mandating or restricting. It is time to hold Retch and Whitmer accountable for her actions. In fact, it is long overdue. I would urge each of you to vote yes to the FOIA for the governor and her acting agents on this so-called science and data she so often refers to. Yeah, hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bearfield. Livingston Dems has their hand up.
Hi, my name is Judy Dobinmeyer.
Oh, God.
And I live at 4490 Lake Shore Court, Brighton, Michigan, 48116. I'm here today to talk about what is basically a publicity stunt, and that's the resolution authorizing a FOIA request regarding state of Michigan orders on workplace COVID restrictions. Let's be clear, this isn't about our health or keeping our community safe during a pandemic or determining when enough people have been vaccinated so it's safe to return to the workplace. It is about getting a lot of publicity for someone's political career. One way to advance your political career within the Republican Party today is to let other Republican activists throughout the state know just how extreme you are. This resolution does that by asking that copies of this resolution, if passed, be circulated to every county commission in the state. So that's 82 county commissions with many Republican members who are likely to attend the party's state convention. They'll all know who our chair is and just how extreme he is. So then, when it comes time to vote for the GOP nominations for lieutenant governor or other statewide office, his reputation will have preceded him. And the best part is, it's all free to him. We, the taxpayers, will pay for the publicity campaign on his behalf. He won't have to spend a dime on photocopying or postage or spend any time looking up the addresses and names of the other county commissioners. He can spread his name and extreme views throughout the entire state at our expense. What a scam. Please vote against this resolution, because if you approve this one, there will be lots more to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobinmeyer. Emily Kalunki. Hopefully, I pronounced that right.
Yes, you did pronounce it right.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Emily Kalunki Pasternak, 10481 Spring Grove, Brighton, Michigan, 48114. Historically, the public could depend on elected leaders to educate themselves by means of reputable sources, such as the Associated Press or respected universities, of which we have no shortage in Michigan, in order to thoroughly understand and clearly communicate to the constituents the most pressing facts of the day. My late father was one such elected official in Upper Michigan. The study cited as contradicting Governor Whitmer's emergency orders is fraudulent. The study is not affiliated with Stanford. The author does not work for the VA in Palo Alto. Collaboratively, cooperatively, we've had the knowledge and the resources and the wherewithal necessary to subdue the COVID pandemic. But consistently and countrywide, the expert knowledge of public health scientists is being ignored and lied about for political purposes. Here in Livingston County, with our above-average levels of education and above-average levels of resources, infection rates and risk continue to be extremely high. All the while, public health experts continue to explain that high levels of transmission increase the risk for development of vaccine-resistant strains of COVID. Please spend this anti-mask energy on increasing vaccination rates in the county. For those who know better but insist on worsening our situation during the pandemic, since no one can shame the shameless, I am ashamed for you. Capable of multitasking, I am concurrently so sorry for those who truly do not understand or are being misled. To quote a local community leader, "We can do better." The last comparison I wish to illustrate is this. I am so relieved that my father, a first-generation American, a child of the Great Depression who graduated high school directly into service in World War II, is not here to see what some Americans today see as too high a price to pay for the safety of their fellow Americans. We need to just wear the bloody masks, people, and get vaccinated as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kalunki. Anybody else? I don't see any Zoom hands raised. I'll scan the... Oh. Jessica Hamlin. Go ahead.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Jessica Hamlin. I'm from Osceola Township. I am speaking tonight regarding the FOIA resolution, and I am asking all of the commissioners to vote yes on holding our governor accountable to transparency. If there is any reasonable studies to show the extension of this emergency, then that should be provided to us. It is not extreme or a publicity stunt. It is for transparency. There are people's lives who are extremely, if you want to talk about extreme, they are extremely affected by these emergency orders. We are seeing businesses that can't even get people to come in, to staff their businesses, to keep them open. So now we're looking at risks of more businesses suffering or being lost and shut down because of these emergency orders. It is, you know, you want to talk about science. There is only one source of science that is being used. There are so many other studies. There are so many other ways to handle this virus that will not be... If you talk about it, you're a conspiracy theorist, which is crazy, because I just, I never recalled a time where you don't get a second opinion on anything. Whenever, you know, we have a health issue, what do you tell your loved one? Did you get a second opinion? All of a sudden, for some reason, that's taboo for this. Not everyone wants this experimental vaccine. So that pushing a vaccine on people while it's in trial phases, it's not, that is not an answer. And the fact that it's now being pushed on our children is extremely frightening. Also, just wear the bloody masks. I mean, I don't understand another thing, how one size of this does not fit all. I really wish that there was some more compassion to people who cannot wear masks for various, many, many reasons. And if you do not know that and you do not understand why somebody cannot wear a mask, please, you know, reach out to somebody who can't, and they will be glad to talk to you about it. It is not a one-size-fits-all. The vaccine is not the answer, because that's not going to happen for everybody. We do deserve transparency. I do ask the board to please vote yes on, and holding our governor accountable to giving us her reasoning.
Ms. Hamlin, your time, your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Gianni Kazan is next up.
Hi. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I, you know, for as educated as the average people...
Could you provide your address, Ms. Kazan?
Yes, absolutely. 1700 Deanna Drive, Howell, Michigan. I am just stunned at the fact that the "science-driven," quote-unquote, "science-driven" people do not wish to see the other side or every side that is being offered. There is absolutely no reason why we cannot see what science any decision is based on. And when you don't want to see it, I am offended, as a physician, that you would not want to see to the other side. There is so much censorship going on, and masks are not the answer. They don't work, and they actually create harm with all the CO2 that's being resorbed, all the bacteria that we take. I saw a mask today that had filth in the front of the nose, because it's being worn, and this is by a healthcare provider. So the danger is off the chart. There is cure. There is preventative treatment available for coronavirus that is being censored, and we're not allowed to prescribe it. There is treatment that is out there, and you can listen to multiple physicians across America, across Europe, and everywhere else that is provided that is not allowed. If treatment is available, prevention is available, we would not need an experimental vaccine to have a emergency authorization. So I think Livingston County, being that, you know, we make decisions for ourselves, and we don't just take orders. We should see what exactly is the governor basing all her decisions on, and then we can make our own decision. Anyone else that doesn't want to look has one agenda and one agenda only. And we need to be smarter than that. We need to see both sides. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, John Wallbank. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm John Wallbank. I live at 2899 Party Road, Genoa Township. Just want to address some of the information that has been on the commission's website and some information provided by previous speakers. Number one, the, and not to get into too much detail, the Vengeelbaum article that cited is not a study. It's a hypothesis. It's not based on any researched data done by Vengeelbaum or any of his associates. It relies heavily on quotations from other articles, many of them who have been peer-reviewed. The Vengeelbaum article itself has been removed from the website where it was posted, largely because Vengeelbaum took so many liberties with quoting sources. He rather abused sources, quoted them out of context. So the Vengeelbaum study is something that really should be disregarded. That notwithstanding, you don't get to vote on science. I mean, science is something that, yeah, see, science is peer-reviewed. Science can be controversial. Science is nuanced. And it's not, doctrine never serves science, and science should not serve doctrine. Regarding masks, no, masks do not stop particles. Virus is too small to be stopped by a mask. But viruses carried by droplets, and masks stop droplets. That's the whole technology behind masks. This idea that, oh, masks are a fraud because they don't stop particles, nonsense. Masks stop droplets, and masks have been used for decades and decades to create antiseptic environments and to promote safety from diseases that can be transmitted through particles that are carried in the air. Masks and immunity. Yeah, some people, some people will not be able to be vaccinated, and that's why the rest of us should be vaccinated, so that we can protect those people. Some people are not be able to wear masks. That's why we should wear masks and be vaccinated, so that we can protect those people as well. And regarding treatment for COVID-19 and other SARS diseases, yes, there are some treatments. They are not cures. Remdesivir is used in a hospital setting to aid in the treatment. To aid in the treatment, and monoclonal antibodies have to be used in a hospital setting, again, to aid treatment. There is no cure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alena has her hand up.
Hi, my name's Alina, and I'm at 792 Gentry Court in Howell. And I was just hoping to urge the board to vote yes in the FOIA to Governor Whitmer. She has kept our state, along with other fellow Michanders, under her strict mandates and orders for over a year now. We should be looking at the local community, making local decisions that are best for our community. So if you, I urge you all to go ahead and please vote yes for the citizens of Livingston County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else with their Zoom hand up. I had just scrolled through the Zoom videos. I didn't see anybody with their hand raised. So I'm going to go ahead and close the first call to public and just remind everybody that there is a second call to public towards the end of the meeting. Item seven on the agenda is approval of minutes. It's, we have two sets of, two sets of minutes dated, one dated April 26th, the other dated May 5th. I'm looking for a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Move, Lawrence.
Support Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Lawrence, support by Commissioner Zajak. Any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, tabled items from previous meetings. We have no tabled items, so we'll move on to item number nine, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move, Helserman.
Support, Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, item number 10 on the agenda are reports. Just remind my colleagues on the board that after the item A, I'll take reports from commissioners. But tonight, it's my pleasure to present to Mr. Jim Berry, the first quarter 2021 Employee Recognition Winner. This was done via external nomination. And a little bit of background on Mr. Berry. Mr. Berry is in the building department. He's a building inspector, plan reviewer. He's got 27 years of service with the county up in August. And he was actually nominated by, I'll say, a customer who is somebody from Florida. So this is really special in my mind. But what I'd like to do is read a quote here that was included from the client, from the customer, when he nominated Mr. Berry. It says, quote, "I travel nationally. I am able to experience many employees in building departments every month." Sunglass Hut, spring and summer of 2020, he met Jim Berry, including the entire staff of the Livingston County Building Department. He goes on to say, "This renewed my hope and attitude of the permit process, traveling the country with constant problems, delays, attitudes, and issues. The permit process with Jimmy Berry and the Livingston County Building Department spoke loudly and reminded me this is rare. It is the way it was and should be." And final, I was reminded Jimmy Berry was a building inspector many years previously that required additional possible controversial inspections 20 years ago. And today, "It is a pleasure to cross paths with a man that continues to practice the morals and ethics the majority of us were instilled with and continues to practice and instill them in our workplace." Thank you, Mr. Berry. That's quite a testimony. I would ask my colleagues to give you a round of applause. So Mr. Berry is participating virtually. I just want to, you know, add a comment, which, a little testimony about the whole building department. I, when I first became a commissioner, I was at a Memorial Day parade and was talking with the crowd, and somebody heard that I was a commissioner and he came up and wanted to talk. And this was a contractor who had, who has done building in Livingston County and in, you know, Washington, Genesee, you know, the surrounding counties. And he, it was just, it was such a thrill, this gentleman saying the praises of the building department for how responsive they are, how professional they are, how concerned they are for, you know, making it easy on the client. And I think Mr. Berry certainly exemplifies that. So once again, thank you. And if you wanted to say a few words, we would certainly welcome them from such an exemplary employee.
I don't, I don't do much of this Zoom stuff, so can I, can you hear me okay? I just, I want to thank everyone for this recognition award. This is, this is something that, it was totally unexpected. This is, this is what I do every day. That's why, that's why it was so unexpected. I do want to say that having my bosses, Jim Raul and Rick Swanson, they're, they keep our department running very well, and they've made fantastic choices hiring people. And the people in our department are, they're really good to work with. It's just a, it's a really good place to work. That's why I've been there for so many years. I mean, it's enjoyable to go to work. You don't wake up and go, oh, jeez, I got to go to work again. That is not the way the building department runs. It's, it's just a very, very friendly environment to be in. And I want to thank all of you again. Very much appreciated this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate all you do for Livingston County and continued great success. Thanks.
Thank you.
We're still on reports. Any reports from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll just say, I see Jim Raul on Zoom, and just to shout out Jim to your department and the kudos that were just given. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that.
Any other reports from commissioners? Commissioner Zajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of points. The first one, Commissioner Plank and I have been working with Administrator Byrd and a couple of leaders in the community, in the education realm, leaders from a couple of different area schools, working in an ad hoc basis, trying to find ways to bring government and schools together for opportunities for students, for expanded learning opportunities. And we're really in the brainstorming phase, and I wanted to let commissioners know that that's an ongoing process. I think I mentioned it back in February. I couldn't have my dates mixed up, but a couple of months ago at least. And that process is still ongoing. Nothing formalized, nothing official, but just conversation that I know I personally have found to be very beneficial for my learning in terms of what the education, different branches of education do within our county and eye-opening to the opportunities that might exist. The second item that I have to discuss is the results of the community grant funding project. As commissioners know, we applied as a county for an opportunity for up to $12 million for broadband, for a broadband project that our CIO, our administrator, several other folks within the departments worked very tirelessly on. I think it was a heroic undertaking, if I might say so, to get the amount of work done in a very short period of time that they did. It was a about-two-week timeframe to pull together the scope of a project sufficient to garner some level of grant support in two weeks, which I can only imagine in government days, that probably is usually about six months. So very job well done by that group. Unfortunately, the project was not selected. I feel strong... Unfortunately, the, the project was not selected. I, I feel strongly that it had broad community support. I feel strongly that it had, um, very broad community impact and really opportunity to impact, um, communities outside of Livingston County based on the, the work and the maps that were drawn up by, uh, the CIO and, uh, related teams. Um, so I'm, I'm quite disappointed that, uh, the Congresswoman did not select our project. Um, there are other projects. It's publicly available information that have been selected. Um, and, um, again, quite disappointed looking at our project, uh, about why it was not selected. Nonetheless, uh, we did receive today, as commissioners know, guidance from the Treasury about opportunities for, um, the rescue plan funding. I'm very hopeful that we'll find an opportunity to use some of that money and perhaps, um, as we're hearing, there may be additional monies. We'll see what that looks like, um, and, and pursue broadband for our community in a hopefully very near future because it's very much needed, especially in light of circumstances we've dealt with for the last 14 months or so. Uh, the last item that I have in my report is with regards to, uh, general government committee business. There, as commissioners know, we approved a resolution, um, I think it was in February also, uh, with regard to the build out of the new Veteran Services, um, office. The selection process for different construction aspects of that project, I won't pretend to know all the details, um, of what, all the hard work that was done to, to get to where we are. But that, that resolution seeking authorization to do the spending, um, is up, uh, ready to be approved by commissioners, um, prior to going to legal approval. I'm going to authorize that to skip general government and go right to finance in order to expedite the process so that we're not wasting, um, bond funds, um, on rent that we otherwise can't use. So I wanted commissioners to be aware. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else with a report? I, I just wanted to, um, do a short report and that, that regards the, uh, the resolution for the FOIA. I, I had spoke with a constituent that, uh, uh, wrote a lengthy, uh, email regarding, um, the whole situation. She was under the impression that the resolution, uh, for FOIA was put forward based on information and a reading of this medical hypothesis, which I can understand why she thought that. Uh, I, I read the media account of the, you know, what transpired, um, you know, in the, uh, finance committee. And it seems that, uh, the way it was written, that one could easily, uh, conclude that it was, um, based on this medical hypothesis. But I, I can assure everybody in the public and my colleagues, and if, and if people in the public would take, uh, are, are interested, they could read the resolution. It's posted online and it, the reason the FOIA is going forward is not the medical hypothesis. It is because the Myosha orders are flawed. The governor put forward orders to renew, or, uh, uh, order renewal that relies and says that there are no vaccines. It also says there is no, um, effective viral treatment. Both, both those statements are wrong, uh, outdated or wrong. And it does, in my mind, call into question what, what other evidence might be outdated or wrong. I think citizens of the county deserve to know when it's impacting their lives, um, quite directly, you know, what, what is the, uh, real evidence? And, um, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. So, thank you very much. Um, we'll move on, uh, from reports to item number 11 on the, uh, agenda. It's approval of the consent agenda. It's resolutions 2021 dash 05 dash 066 through 2021 dash 05 dash 071. Uh, looking for, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved Reader.
Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Reader, support by, uh, Commissioner Gross. The discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 12 on the agenda, um, are resolutions for consideration. Um, we have resolution, uh, 2021 dash 05 dash 072. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of MERS service credit by Deputy Kevin Crane. It comes to us from the Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion?
Move it, Helserman. Support Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Gross. Um, any discussion, questions from commissioners? Um, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
No.
Motion carries.
Um, the, the next resolution, 2021 dash 05 dash 073. It's a resolution au- authorizing the acceptance of the county clerk's 2020 annual report. Is there a motion?
So moves Zajak.
Support Lawrence.
Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Lawrence. Uh, Clerk Hunley, did you have some words to share with us?
Yes, I'm, I'm not going to read the report back. It is provided for the commissioners and for the public to read. Um, but I did prepare just a couple of slides if I could share, if Amy could share her screen. Um, we'll walk through just a couple of slides. The annual report is comprehensive, but there's still a lot of things that we do that are not included in the annual report and listed on the screen. You can see those. Um, I worked as a member of the county administrator search committee and all of these items that are listed take time from Christie and I. Um, so there is more that we do than what's included in the report. So, and Amy, if you could move to the next slide. Um, just a summary. I know we have a lot of new commissioners. Um, we have actually three budgets here that are general fund, plus we have a CPL fund. So what I did here on this slide for you is just show you that, um, we actually exceeded our forecasted revenues last year. Um, to the tune of almost 140,000 for general fund dollars, with a lot of that coming from the, um, circuit court end. Um, we exceeded our revenue there by close to 87,000 and, you know, a lot of that credit goes to Christie, who's here with me today and her efforts for the court collections. Um, I commend her on that and there'll, there'll be another slide coming up. But in addition to exceeding our revenues, um, you will see that we came in under our expenses on all of our budgets. And I actually returned just over $56,000 to the general fund. So we do take our responsibility of providing great service while being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars very seriously. So, and then if you move to the next slide, you will see a brief explanation of the CPL fund. Um, many new commissioners might not realize that when the, um, legislature changed the CPL law back in 2015, they created a CPL fund and it is a special revenue fund. It can only be utilized for CPL expenses. And last year we had a record number of applications for CPLs, you know, even in the midst of a pandemic. You know, a lot of these were in-person applications for new CPLs. We had over close to 2,270 new CPL applications last year. And we do that fingerprinting, but for every CPL application, new or renewal, the fee is $115. On a new CPL, $74 of that money goes directly to the state through a trust and agency account. $26 goes to what the CPL fund that must be used for CPL expenses. And in addition, since I, the county clerk's office is doing the fingerprinting, that additional $15 fingerprint fee as well goes to the CPL fund. Um, for all renewals, $79 of each renewal goes to the state of Michigan and $36 goes into the CPL fund. As you can see from the chart that is shown there, the little graph, the CPL fund is almost, it's nearing $420,000. So, um, just so the commissioners are aware, that fund does exist. It is restricted. Uh, there are some improvements. I know there's going to be new carpeting going in. Um, I mentioned to Chris Foltz that in that area, that I do believe that the CPL fund, since a bulk of the in-person traffic is CPL related, um, I think that CPL fund should be utilized for those expenses. So with the next slide then, um, this just briefly shows you, as I mentioned, um, Christie does a lot of work on the collections for the court end and it will show you, um, basically the left-hand chart. I was not in office as the county clerk at that time and, um, there weren't that many tax garnishments sent out. As I came into office, we've really been working on tracking and improving that. And for example, in the last tax year, which was shown as 2019 tax year, we used $6,000 of general fund dollars out of our budget to expenditures for, um, issuing tax garnishments. And a lot of work, Christie puts a lot of work into these prior to that, but out of that, we received just general fund dollars for that $6,000, $31,600. Um, so when we come to the Board of Commissioners and I may ask to exceed my allocated expenditure amount, um, in the, in the Circuit Court District area in the, that item is a good investment of taxpayer dollars. You look at that return on investment and Christie's time has been well spent. So, uh, that pretty much sums up, uh, the year. 2020 was extremely unique. There was no playbook for us to follow. Um, I truly thank Christie and our staff for their efforts this year because many people stayed home and worked remote. We worked in person, providing essential services to the public. So I do want to thank Allison. I saw Allison on, on the Zoom meeting portion. Allison helps me put together my information in this beautiful format. Um, I mentioned to Nathan Bird that, you know, she is a valuable treasure to this county, but I appreciate Allison's help. She's so patient with us. Um, I also want to thank the Board of Commissioners because there's not been a project that we bring forward that you guys have not, um, approved for us. So thank you for your continued support, um, as well as administration. So I appreciate that. And you can't get through 2020 annual report without thanking Diane McCormick. Um, there were so many times I had to call Diane with a unique situation. Do we have to quarantine? Do I have to keep someone home? You know, it didn't matter if it was a weekend or when it was. Diane answered her phone. She, that woman is amazing. And also someone who's, who's, um, near and dear to us for all the support is Chris Foltz and Facility Services. I mean, they jumped through tons of hoops to keep us safe and providing services to the public. So, um, thank you to Chris and his department. And, um, I just, I invite the commissioners to come into the clerk's office. Most of you have an experience with the elections division, but I welcome you to the court end into the vital records portion as well because, um, we truly are the face of Livingston County government to so many people in the public. So I invite you. Please come visit us. But thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Conde. Any, any questions or comments from commissioners?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to thank both of you for everything that you do. Uh, and Christie, congratulations on your certification. I didn't know about that until I read that. Um, and I'll tell you, before Christie took on the, um, collections, there really weren't a lot. And I think the important number up there is to see that over $5,000 went back to victims. And there was a fight for years because the prosecutor's office would not, uh, go after money that had been, uh, ordered in restitution. So when Christie came along, all that changed. So we should thank her five times over for everything that she does. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reader. Any, any other questions or comments?
Chairman.
Commissioner Gross.
Um, in looking through, uh, Betsy's report, I, I was very pleased to see, um, her, uh, congratulations to Joe Bridgman. And, um, as one of our relatively new electeds on the board, I have to say that I was really, really pleased with working with, with Joe and, you know, going through the fog of, of a new politician and, and requirements for, uh, reporting and, you know, finance, campaign finance, et cetera. And, uh, he's, he's a marvelous gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Please. Um, I just want to say it's what a dynamic department that you run and all the different facades that you provide. And you truly are, your department, the court side, is truly a face of Livingston County and the service that you provide. Most people will, don't walk to the building department. They don't go to the court. They don't, they go to the clerk's office. Um, and I'm proud of what you've done there and how you run your department and the dedication that all the employees have. We're just blessed in Livingston County with all the different departments that we have and the dedication of all the employees. I'm, I'm proud. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Helserman.
Uh, the elections, uh, integrity is very important to me and across the state, I, uh, I'm just happy that, uh, you run a very tight ship and, uh, you work very hard to educate all of our clerks. I keep them up to date and certified. And when we see Livingston County results, uh, we can trust them and thank you for your work. And thank you, Christie, for your, your, always a smile on your face work. So.
Thank you very much. That's quite a compliment.
Anybody else? Before we go, I, I would like to thank the clerk's office. Um, I, um, I want to, uh, I'll say ditto to everything that's been said, but I also say, I, I appreciate that, um, it was emailed out ahead of time, so we get a chance to look at it. And that you provided a summary and that provides time to have a little bit of dialogue. And I, I, I think that format, uh, worked, worked out really well. Um, and I, I applaud you for, um, not only, you know, the job that you do, but the report that you presented. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, it's, um, we, uh, vote on the resident? Okay.
No.
Oh, we have a motion in support. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 13 on the agenda is our, um, call to the public. If there's anybody in the public wishing to address the Board of Commissioners, please indicate. So on Zoom by the raise your hand feature or, um, just wave at us. Um, I see, uh, hand, a Zoom hand raised from Livingston Dems. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Judy Dobinmeyer and I gave my address earlier. Uh, I just wanted to remind people that the orders regarding workplace restrictions were modified today, uh, due to the state reaching 55% of the population receiving, uh, at least one vaccination. So I'm not sure what that, uh, uh, resolution accomplished, as well as the fact that the governor's not subject to FOIA. So really wasn't, uh, worth your time.
Thank you. Um, anybody else? Um, I see a, a Zoom hand raised from, uh, Lori Cowan. Go ahead, Ms. Cowan.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm just really disappointed you passed the resolution for the FOIA request. Governor Whitmer's job is to try and protect the residents of Michigan. Governor Whitmer's job is to try and protect the residents of Michigan. COVID is nothing like we've ever encountered before. It's not like the flu. It's not just a small virus. It's potentially deadly and debilitating. I lost a friend to it. I had another friend that took six months to recover from it. My brother is a physiologist. My sister-in-law is a physician. My other sister-in-law is a nurse and they all agree how horrific this is. And the guidelines that Governor Whitmer has put in place is based on science and they all agree. I'm just wondering where the compassion has gone for our fellow human being. I am one of the ones that was impacted by the restrictions. I work in a restaurant. I didn't work for a few months. I took a tremendous pay cut to go back to try and help. I work remotely, but that's what you do in a crisis and a pandemic. You do this to try and save a life. That's all.
Thank you. I see a Zoom hand raised from Sean Greer. Go ahead, Mr. Greer.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you and the board for passing the resolution. I believe any information that we can pull from a FOIA request only helps solidify and confirm the public's informative knowledge, not just based off opinions and how we feel about our own self-experiences. I think FOIA requests are out there and the ability for people to see things that we normally wouldn't get to see is critical. And I thank you and the board for voting.
Thank you. Anybody, I don't see any more Zoom hand raised, hands raised. I don't see anybody waving at us on Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move, Helserman.
Support, Zajak.
Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioners Zajak. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Zajak.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.